I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody.
All of you in the crowd, all two of you.
All right, welcome to the May 19th Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been appropriately noticed in all forums and places. And we will proceeding with the hearing. Madam Chairwoman?
Okay. We'll do have the roll call, please.
Mr. Bernstein. Ms. DiMarzo.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Tremer.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
We're going to go into executive session eventually, but we're waiting for that attorney to come. So I'm just going to continue on with the payment for voucher reporting secretary looking for a motion.
I make a motion to pay the voucher, Sullivan.
Second, Bernstein.
We'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Ms. DiMarzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, and we'll have a motion for approval of the minutes from April 21st, please.
So move, Sullivan.
Second, DiMarzo. Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Ms. DiMarzo.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
We can take a five-minute recess and just wait for our Ralupa attorney to... We can take a five-minute recess just to wait for our Ralupa attorney to get here.
And if I can sit, you can still sit here and wait. Once we go into executive session, I'll ask you to sit.
Unless we want to handle Mr. Pfeffer's administrative... Yeah, it shouldn't be any more than five, 10 minutes.
We have three resolutions also that we could...
Well, we don't want to discuss the one resolution because that's what the executive session is about. So it doesn't make sense at all. So we'll do this. All right, Mr. Pfeffer. Thank you. I know you're going to have to be flexible for that.
Thank you. I figured this should really take five minutes, so hopefully, if not, you'll tell me to stop and we'll get back to it after. Good evening, Adam Pfeffer, attorney on behalf of the applicant, the Jackson 21 Homeowners Association. Again, I just want to be clear, I'm here on behalf of the HOA, not on the original developer. I had sent in a letter to Mr. Shea. Basically, what's happening is everyone's familiar with the Jackson 21 development. It's well-built and homeowners have now moved in. They had come back before this board some months ago to make a few changes. One of the changes they also added, multiple times, they also added in at one point the right to have decks. That resolution, which I reviewed, approved decks 10 by 12 in size. There was no real reason to pick that number. It was just a number, from my understanding, it was put on. I was contacted as apparently there have been many homeowners who have now sought out to get larger decks. When they went before Mr. Papur, the zoning officer, for a zoning certificate, he indicated that he can't approve them as they were only approved by 10 by 12. I did speak with Mr. Papur and I asked him if there was a larger deck, would that create a variance or would they encroach into any of the setbacks? Again, on one by one, he says, no, it wouldn't necessarily do that, but he felt that because the board only approved the deck of 10 by 12, he said it should really come back before this board. I told him I personally respectfully disagree with that because that would mean that any house that was on the part of any subdivision, if it didn't show the original deck of a certain size, his position is it should be coming back to this board on a constant basis. So what I'm here this evening is to request, is just to allow, as long as any individual request for a deck does not create a new variance or encroach into any of the setbacks, Mr. Papur should have the zoning authority to sign off on the zoning certificate.
So the concern is that Mr. Papur is trying to protect the zoning board against having hundreds of people come before them looking for individual variances. Is that the goal?
I'm not sure, again, so I think he's just trying to protect to make sure that there's no question later on and he's just, they picked the size and they went for it. What I'm saying is that individual homeowners have to go in for individual permits each time.
Yeah.
So they still have to go to the zoning office.
Yes.
But they don't have to go before the zoning board.
Board, right.
The protections are still there.
Yes.
For the township.
And if any individual would be creating a variance by doing it or within a setback, he's just going to deny that zoning certificate and it would have to go back before the board. Mr. Papur then also sent another email indicating that they never requested stairs for those decks. Again, my comment is the same, as long as it doesn't encroach in any setbacks or create any variances, we're just looking for guidance.
They all have to go before the zoning office.
Yes, every single...
Just not the zoning board.
Correct.
All right, is any questions from the members of the board?
Dr. Campbell.
Mr. Trump.
Are any of these decks, one or more stories, off the ground?
Yes, they'll all be one or more stories.
Okay, so they're not ground level.
They're in townhouses and the townhouses, they're coming out of the townhouse. So they're coming off the townhouse. I assume, having been there, that they're coming, the decks are coming off the second floor.
Yes, and right now they're technically allowed to do a 10 by 12, but if somebody wanted to do a 10 by 14 and it doesn't create a variance, they still have to come back before the board as the way it's written, at least in Jeff's opinion.
So we already approved the decks.
Right, but I'm just wondering if you go 15, 18 feet, whatever they want to go, does it create a structural question?
Well, so basically what happened here is that when we had the original application, Mr. Riker wanted to make it equitable for everybody.
And everybody had the same size deck.
Right, so what happened was is that we ended up, I think it was like 12 by 10 or something like that. So the problem is that everybody's got different sized lots, right? Now, what we did is we basically created a creature of resolution, but we created implied variances. So zoning officers, people are coming in to the zoning officer saying, hey, listen, I just need a zoning permit for this. And they may be going over like a foot or two over what we put in via resolution. And the zoning officer is basically saying, hey, listen, you know, we can't we can't issue a zoning permit. You actually have to go to the zoning board at this point. So to save basically 75 people from going to the zoning board, what we do is we bring it back to what the ordinance allows them to do, which is just by default, this is whatever the ordinance specifies, but I think it's like 15 or 16 max or something like that.
Yeah, whatever's there.
Yeah, whatever's permitted in the zone, permitted via ordinance, as long as they don't go over that and create a variance, they don't need to go to... They don't need to specifically go to the zoning board each and every time. So it's just getting back to what's allowed in the zone anyway.
It's administrative.
Just for clarification, every one of these decks would have to go to the zoning office for permits, right?
Yes, they still would have to get a permit. And the first step to get the permit is you have to go to the zoning officer, to Mr. Papur or his office for sign-off. And that's why I was saying, when I spoke with Mr. Papur, I said, but isn't this kind of, you know, crazy? If a guy comes in for one foot more, but it's not creating a variance.
Right, we artificially basically amended the zone unintentionally. We did it from a perspective of equity, but now it's in this situation where we're creating 75 to 80, you know, zoning board applications, which would just be, I mean, for three or four feet, it's kind of crazy, you know? When it's already permitted in the zone to do that.
A call back to the days on the zoning board when everybody that wanted a generator had to come back to the zoning board for a variance.
Exactly.
Now, the reason I ask, I just want to clarify because I've had a conversation recently with Mr. Papur and if you don't spell it out, A, B, C, D, E, it's now a catch-22, so...
They would have to do that because they'd have to file. So the filing would be A, B, C, D, E. We've created the problem.
Yes, we have.
We've created the problem and I think we created it for an equity situation, but in this life, things are not always equitable. If somebody has the property, they should be able to use it to the extent that they can.
No, I agree, I agree, but I mean, it just, I just wanted to know if it's more than one story and because the question upstairs does create another issue. So there probably wouldn't be stairs, there'd just be decks that come in and out of the house.
So again, so just to answer that, so I made sure to include Mr. Papur on the request. He responded, again, he didn't say, yeah, you know, he's obviously the one telling me to come to the board. He's the one who raised the issue of the steps, that we should also include the request because right now the homeowners can't access their backyard from their deck, according to him, because at the original, when they came in before the board, they didn't ask for stairs on those decks. So he was the one who raised that concern to me, to make sure I put it in front of the board.
You know, it's interesting because I was driving down a background at Howell and I was looking at a site that was very similar. And I see that half of the homes have decks with stairs and half of them do not. So I can see where somebody would want that access and egress on and off their deck and it makes sense, but we might as well, while we're solving one problem, solve another problem, which would be to save that by adding stairs. It would save that.
And to go back to Mr. Tremer's point, so what happens is that they'll submit the zoning permit into Mr. Papur, right, to get the zoning permit. If he identifies with no variances, he'll just sign off on it. And then they take that, they bring it to the building department. The building department has to run it through the International Residential Code to make sure that, you know, if a stairway or ladder is needed, then they have to put it in. So and then they have to get the building permit to do that. So there's multiple layers to it. So they can't just like go in, put a three-story or two-story deck in, you know, without any, you know, fire access or any emergency access. I mean, if it's the International Building Code or the International Residential Code is requiring it, they got to put it in.
All this would be doing is alleviating having to come before the board for it. Everything else, all the other safeguards are still in place. We're not alleviating any of that, nor is the board granting any variances by doing this. They would have, if there was a variance being requested, then it would definitely have to come before the board.
So they'll have to bring in their plot, their lot. They would see where the lot line was. So the people who had that one stretch, there's one stretch in that development that has a short area behind the homes. They could only then have the 10 to 12.
Only if it's even, and even then, only if it's within, if it doesn't encroach. If it does, they can't even get the 10 by 12, so nothing has changed. There was one other request in my letter. There is a community pool. The HOA has gotten some requests. They would like to install the fence in accordance with the new ordinance to have an eight-foot-high fence. I did speak with, again, Mr. Papur on the same request based upon the ordinance. He again said, it seems like it would comply if the request came into him. But again, he said, under the same exact rationale and reasonings, he's told me to come back to the board, he's saying it wasn't part of the original request, so that we should come back here. So the request would be again, that they would be able to, Mr. Papur would be able to review that request and as long as it complies with the new ordinance, that they would be able to get their permit.
Any concerns? Any concerns?
I have one question. I'm just a little confused on the stairways on the decks. Are there any existing decks that would be required to put a stairway in?
Because I don't know if there are any decks that were installed yet because they just recently had that amendment. And then, but it seems like I, from Mr. Papur's email to myself and to Ms. Campbell and to Bobby, it seems like I don't think he would allow a staircase to go in right now, based upon his interpretation. But if the board says that you would allow it, then he'll look at it and if they could install one, then it would be okay.
But that would be on an individualized basis.
Individual, yes, correct. This is not carte blanche, this would be each homeowner. Correct.
Clarify.
Correct. It's an option.
Yes.
And no one has to make a larger deck or a smaller deck. It's an option.
100%. Or no deck.
Would the residents also have to get HOA approval for this or are they...
So this request, I was engaged by the HOA. The HOA was approached by numerous homeowners. I do have a representative here, if you do need to hear from the HOA, I have a representative here. But again, it was, the request was coming directly, as opposed to all the individuals coming before the board. They got together, went to the HOA, the HOA as a whole came in just making this request.
Okay, so they have, it's unified.
Yes.
They agree with this.
Any other concerns? Should we take a motion on approving this? Do we need that?
You have to do a motion, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll accept a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the requested changes.
For deck pool and stairs.
For deck pool and stairs for this project.
Look for a second.
Second, Bernstein.
Let's do a vote, please.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Ms. DiMarzo.
I just had one question, you said pool?
Yeah.
Oh, the fence, I'm sorry. I would have said fence, not pool, okay, yes. Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tremer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go into executive session, so we're going to have to take a motion and go into executive session. In the meantime, anyone who is sitting here except our own professionals, I'm sorry to ask you to sit elsewhere. Find a spot.
And just to be clear, so motion to go into executive session for litigation issues.
Litigation issues, so we'll accept a motion, please.
Motion to go into executive...
Second, Sullivan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have to find our attorney. I just... I just...
All right, so we've approved the minutes. We've had executive session. We're back in regular session. And we will now go into the resolutions. Ms. Morris?
Resolution 2025-15 of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and design waivers for the conversion of an existing residential dwelling into a house of worship for 780 Heisen Road LLC, Block 1301, Lots 22 and 23. Eligible to vote are Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
Accept a motion, please. Somebody.
Motion, Heller?
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Bernstein?
And we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-16 of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey granting preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a two-story synagogue for Bias Medras Hope Chapel, Inc., Block 13601, Lots 12 and 13. Eligible to vote are Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Heller, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Rose, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2025-16. Sullivan?
Second, Rose.
Okay, Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
And the last one is Resolution 2025-17 of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with required variances and design waivers for the construction of a six-tenant, 72,443-square-foot, two-story warehouse office building for Block 490 LLC, Block 2603, Lot 27. Eligible to vote are Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Rose, Mr. Sullivan, and Dr. Campbell.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2025-17. Sullivan?
Second, Bernstein.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell?
Yes. Now we'll have some changes to the agenda schedule. Block 6501, Lot 42.02, My Address LLC. The application is being withdrawn without prejudice. We'll have a vote to approve that withdrawal.
Some move. Sullivan?
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tremer?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Weingart? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes. I don't know that we need a vote on this one. It's June the 9th. Meeting is canceled because we have no applications. So we don't want to sit here and look at each other. So I'll just ask for a all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll be shot. All right. Now, we had discussed whether to have a June 23rd meeting. We're going to hold that date, so keep in touch. Look at your email. Pay attention because we may have a meeting that night. So keep that on your calendar. Just wanted to explain that to you. We also have an ordinance 2015-16 review. That's this one.
That's the master plan.
Right, that's the master plan. So we'll look for a vote on, a motion on the ordinance we just discussed at length with our attorney.
Motion to approve. Sullivan?
A second, please.
Second, Heller?
And we'll do a vote on that, please.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Marzo?
No.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tremer?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Weingart? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes. We have a master plan report. Did we get something from our attorney that I requested?
Oh, yes, we did. I emailed it to you.
Oh, I didn't see it.
So basically, just to sum it all up, what we're doing with the affordable housing is that we're waiting on the Affordable Housing Commission to approve or deny the feasibility studies that we've sent to them. We have a, I think it's a June 29th or June 30th deadline pursuant to the, pursuant to the agreement that we have with them. We've requested an extension because we don't know how long it's going to take for them to get simple answers back to us. But we've requested it just to be safe, which is why I think we may have to keep the June 23rd meeting open just, just in the event that we get denied because they have denied multiple townships, I think seven, in, in the past month or two. So just to be on the safe side, we're going to keep that one open. And we're just waiting to hear back. I mean, unfortunately, they kind of...
Now, here's the problem. We have, we requested a 30-day extension, but the law says that we have to meet with the public on this by June 30th. So we're between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah.
We have not seen the finals because the state has not given us back the affordable numbers to plug into the master plan. So it's, again, between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, and it gets a little, it gets a little dangerous, which is why you don't want to play with it because what happens is that if in the event that we go beyond the timeframe, we essentially waive our, our immunities pursuant to statute. So what that means is that any developer can come in, let's say they want to put like 100% affordable unit in, they can initiate what's, what's called a builder's remedy litigation and attempt to do so. So we want to make sure that we don't waive those, those immunities. And, and we make sure that we either get the extension or we get this in within the deadline. But they're kind of, we're kind of shackled a little bit right now because we're waiting on the response back from them to kind of either proceed and move forward or we're going to have to go back and, and get additional information for the feasibility to determine if, you know, the sewer, the water, the electricity, the plumbing, if that's capable for what we're looking at. So it's, we want to preserve our immunities, but at the same time, we need them to...
Give us the numbers.
To, you know, give us some kind of feedback, and we're just waiting on that. So that, that's kind of the update. That's where we're at.
And I know Ms. DiMarzo and Mr. Heller and I are just beyond distressed because this, that has taken the state months beyond. We've been finished with this whole process for months and months and months. And we're just stuck in the, the state's ability to get us the information we need in order to plug in these numbers.
And once you do have the numbers, how long would it take, do you think, to have it finished?
It, it will be, it, it's finished. It just needs those literally...
Literally, those just blank spaces for the numbers.
Put those numbers in there.
Right, so, so what hap- what happens...
And then they have to get back to us with the draft.
Right, so what happens next week, if the state comes back and says, everything's beautiful, you're good to go, we're ready to do this thing. But if the state comes back and says, oh, you know what, you know, you guys look like you, you know, PSC, PSCNG, you know, it doesn't have the capacity over here, or, you know, this one area doesn't have the sewer capacity, or you guys are going to have to run three miles worth of plumbing in this area, or water in this area, that's, that's where we're at. And we don't know what they're going to come back with because they're kind of non-responsive to a certain extent. So, so we're kind of in a holding pattern. We're, we got our fingers crossed. We're ready to move forward if need be. But we need the feedback from them to be able to get the blessing to move forward pursuant to the agreement so that we can meet the deadline that they imposed, and that's being mandated by the court. So...
The June 30 date has mandated. However, we are ahead of the game in that we've already made settlements about our numbers. So they should give us the 30-day extension with any luck.
Right.
And that would really be only a matter of review. We, we need the time to review. It's, the document is this big. It's not small. So we need the time to review, and we've sent in three or four edited drafts already. So we're, we're hopeful that it's just a matter of plugging in those numbers. But we are frustrated.
Do we, do we have an executive session before the public session?
No.
No.
The, the subcommittee will present to the board and the public at the same time.
Yeah.
That's how the process works. It was explained to me. I would be happy to do it another way, but this is the way it still is.
And the planner will be here answering any question and doing the presentation. And any member of the public can come in.
The engineering company will be here, you know, everyone will be in the room.
Yeah, the whole point of it is, it's a public meeting that's publicly noticed. So any member of the public can come and, and talk to the planner and ask any questions they want.
And for the convenience of the board, we're going to do it on a regular meeting night. So that should make life easier for everybody else. So that's why we've gone through this process.
And I'm assuming that night, nothing else will be on the agenda?
There'll be nothing.
That is, that is correct.
There'll be nothing, and we'll be here till midnight.
That is correct.
That is correct. That is correct. All right. I think, Mr. Pfeffer, if we're lucky, we can move on. I believe that's it, right, Ms. Morrison? We've finished all our bizarre, there was so much business.
Good evening again.
Good evening again. Thank you.
Adam Pfeffer, Attorney General of the Applicant, Whitesville Holdings LLC. The application this evening is for a approximately 78, 175 square foot warehouse in the industrial zone. This property, you couldn't have created, I think, a better location for...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I tried to go and find it. There's no road. You can't get there from here.
So we will, we will...
You're going to explain that to me?
Yes, well, I'll have the professionals explain.
That's a good idea.
Yes.
Did anyone else try to find that building?
Yeah.
You can't get there.
So there's a, there's a paper street.
I thought helicopter, you know, maybe I should get a helicopter to get, well, I found it, but there's no Watt Avenue in Jackson, and there's no road, unless there's a dirt road I missed when I was traversing that whole area on Sunday. It was a joke.
The beauty is, no one will ever see it.
Okay.
Unless there are tenants there.
It wasn't me. Well, I looked at those railroad tracks, and I said to myself, I could probably go down the side of the railroad, but might not be a good idea.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get to all of the, all of those testimony.
Thank you so much.
The railroad tracks are inherently beneficially used.
No, no comment.
I thought it was me. I said, where the heck is this?
There are also a couple of variances that we will be seeking. Two of those are both existing conditions of the property. We're not creating those. Then there's some buffering. So with that, we'll have maybe Mr. Flannery get sworn in. He's going to be sworn in both as an engineer and a planner, and I'll ask him if he can after getting sworn in. I think we've already submitted all of the exhibits, have them pre-marked, and I'll ask him to address the road first, if you can.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth or hold you to nothing but the truth?
My name is Brian Flannery, Director of New Jersey License and Special Engineer, Director of Engineering. We have an aerial exhibit up, and it shows where the site is.
I'm sorry, Brian. And you accept Mr. Flannery as an expert in his field?
Yes, and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so you can see on, on A1, let's see if my latest pointer reaches that more.
I found it on Google Maps. That was the best I could do.
Right, right there off of Whitesville Road, you come across the railroad tracks. That's where there's a paper street, a 60-foot wide paper street. There's a triangle in Tom's River and a triangle in Jackson. And, and I envisioned in 1920s, when they did the first tax map, or whenever they did the first tax map, the drafter said, what's the name of this street? And the surveyor looked at it and said, what street?
That's a good one. But it wasn't spelled W-H-A-T, it was spelled W-A-T-T.
Yeah, so, so it's Watt Street. It's a paper right-of-way. We need to get Tom's River through, through the little triangle in Tom's River. This approval will include the little, the triangle in Jackson, and that will provide access to the site. You can see to the north, it's bounded by the railroad tracks and then Parity Avenue, and there's industrial property across the other side. This is an industrial piece of property. To the east of us is the existing golf course, which has been there for many years. To the south of us is Tom's River, and, and you can see the band of wood that's conserved, wooden area that was implemented as part of the subdivision of those lots in Tom's River. So, you know, when you look at this site, I don't know how many people are familiar with what was there before. I lived about half a mile from this in the 90s, and they have overloads that they used to have. You can see where that was.
I remember those, yeah.
Ultramites would take off and they'd fly and back on the railroad tracks. I don't know if they had approval. I don't know what it was. The only thing I know is one of the crash.
One, somebody died.
Yes.
I remember, I was living here when that happened, and we all, of course, rushed out to see where the heck it was.
Right.
And there was nothing there anyway, so...
Right, right. So it, it's a piece of property that, it's a vacant piece of property. We're proposing a ratable, I think, when you, when you look at the whole thing, you'll see what's proposed on this site is the ideal use of the site that Adam has already mentioned. And I'll start by going through the Overload Report. And it, it lists on page two, the requirements and the variances that Adam alluded to, the minimum lot width, 200 feet is required. We have 115. That's what's existing. We have no way to increase that. So that's a hardship. Minimum lot frontage, we have 60 feet because it's a 60-foot wide paper street. 125 feet is required. Again, no way to fix that. I have to point out on minimum side yard setback combined, the plans that were submitted said we needed a variance for 67.9 feet. It was in state, and, and the Overload Report picked up that same site, but we do not need a variance.
Because there's a huge buffer on that other side.
Yes, we, we have 67 feet on each side. So we're, we're over 120 feet. We do not need that really. And, and then just point out, the maximum building coverage that's allowed is 40%. We're only asking for 9.03. The maximum permius coverage that's allowed is 75. We're only asking 2.07. And the maximum building height, 50 feet is required, but only asking for 40. We're looking for a contractor warehouse, something that fits, something that's a good ratable.
It's, it's not a big, tall, monstrous thing, right? It's...
30 feet.
Right, right.
So going through the report on the utilities, if, if the water's going to be provided by an extension of the public order, and we're proposing an onsite septic system. Number three on page three asks for overview of the post-site operations. Four contractor warehouse units, very small units. We're expecting four to eight, maybe, people total. And sufficient parking is provided. If you could put up the next exhibit, that shows the rendered version of the site plan. And there we are again, near the railroad tracks, as there is Watt. That street comes in, triangle in, in Tom's River, a triangle in Jackson. We, we provided that what looks like a cul-de-sac, a turnaround, because if somebody gets confused and turns in there, we want them to be able to turn around and leave. If they don't want to be on the site, we don't want them on the site.
That's good, good planning. Good planning.
Yes, thank you. So then you go past that, and we have on two sides of the building where they pull in and two contractor warehouses. Each guy has an office and a bathroom. It's a, in my opinion, the optimal utilization of the site. So there will be no outdoor storage. The estimated number of employees, I just said, it's been fortified. Eight will be the top. The hours of operation is a minimal contract where they come in early in the morning, and whether they do stuff there or take off and go out to the site. So it'd be very limited traffic both in the morning and the evening. The stormwater management system will be owned by the owner. The, the site will have cameras and lighting for security purposes. There will be no retail sales. The solid waste and recyclables will be picked up by private companies. At this point, there's no solar rooftop. We'll certainly look at that.
Put it in.
It'll be solar-ready.
Thank you. Evie?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So with respect to the impact on the traffic, all the traffic comes out on Whitesville Road and Tom's River. There's no impact on Jackson. Nobody in Jackson's going to know it's there. I don't think anybody in Tom's River's going to know it's there. I'm going to know it's there because I go to work on Whitesville.
The golfers may know it's there.
Yes.
That looks like a golf path that's going around the back end.
Well, what happened is the golf course one was built and approached onto the site, and it's existing. We're being good neighbors rather than getting into a fight with them. We're going to leave that there. So the people on the golf carts will, will see it. But other than that, the squirrels and birds and stuff.
Right. It's a great ratable.
Yes.
You're going to have an easement agreement, or, or is it not on the property?
It's our property. We're just going to let it be. We're...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're not on theirs, they're on ours.
That's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure there was no cross, you know, easement.
No.
And again, the comment with respect to the right-of-way, it's, it's a small triangle in, in Jackson, a small triangle in Tom's River. The reality is, this property owner maintained it because neither Jackson or Tom's River was going to send a truck out from the cloud, right? This, this applicant will have to plow his own lot, or plow his lot, he will plow his street.
I, I don't like streets that Jackson owns going to private property. I'm well-known for that.
Okay.
There are people who threatened to take me to court for that one, but I'm glad you made up that so we don't have to discuss it.
Yes, this applicant is certainly not expected. We, we have not proposed any sidewalk along that. We, we, right-of-way, we don't want sidewalk there. We understand. We got to contribute to the test to safety. We're happy to give you money instead of putting sidewalk in. Time to put sidewalk.
We don't want to encourage anybody to walk there anyway.
Right. We will comply with ordinance section 244, page 284, or 30th grade. And, and no fellows proposed for the site. We designed it to balance.
That's wonderful.
And, and as indicated, if there were, we'd see 500 cubic yards going in or out, that would be captured and reviewed.
Is there, is there lighting down at the end there? Is there...
When you say the end, even closer to the, to the golf course?
Right, right.
Probably just some site lighting, but we'll make sure it shades down.
Right, okay, thank you.
On page five, it's listed as the stormwater management. It's listed to be owned by the applicant, owned and maintained by the applicant. We comply with the stormwater regs, so any of the downstream impacts have been reduced. And we have done numerous soil boards on site, indicating the soil work and the design as was permitted, has been submitted, and if the board acts favorably, we will need to assure, have your board engineer and all your professionals confirm that. With respect to the comments on, on lighting and landscaping, we will comply with all the things that, as Adam indicated, making sure there's no glare on site, and making sure we comply with the ordinances. During resolution compliance, if the board acts favorably, we will certainly work with your professionals to make sure we comply with all the details. Again, with respect to solid waste, ordinance section 244, page 208, we need the requirements. There was a comment on page six or eleven that said we should address the existing golf course. After course improvements, for removal, and as Boris said, we're not removing it. We don't mind if they drive their golf cart in that area. They, they probably would have been followed anyway. Curly sidewalk have addressed, which would contribute to the fund. And with respect to the technical provisions, we will comply with all of those technical provisions as part of...
provisions as part of resolution compliance if we act favorably. We've got a report with the Bureau of Fire Prevention and we will address all the comments and anything that may be demanded if we act favorably. Proceeding to the R.B.E. report of May ninth, he indicates upfront that we're seeking approval for a warehouse. It's a contractor warehouse by building, 78,075 square feet. Each unit has an office and bathroom. He notes that it's a portion of Wad Avenue and Tom's River and we do need Tom's River's to approve, be approved of that, which we will see immediately if we act favorably. With respect to the zoning, they ask for confirming testimony. No rebuild will be sold from premises. All of these storage will be completely inside and there will be no storage of hazardous And also, we'll comply with no holding of non-street customers anywhere. And we can confirm that with our professionals. This report also goes through the leak that's needed, which is the same with respect to the combined side yard. This report indicates that it has a problem. The non-conforming conditions that we're asking for now, the minimum lot width and frontage. Number two, left section C on page four, we're in the I-zone and we have loading for the contractor's warehouse, depending on what the loading will be. Two doors, one door, two doors on each side, on each unit. We certainly provide any information your board professionals need to show that we conform with proper calculation. Item three indicates we're in the I-zone and where it joins a residential zone, we need a 100-foot upper. The residential zone that we have is on the Tom's River side, that's the only residential area near the area, and Adam has already provided 100-foot conservation easement that beautifully treats right now. Certainly, if we order your professionals on additional landscaping, we feel the landscaping plan that we submitted, it suits what we're proposing, but we're certainly, we listen to your board, your professionals have an idea of a few more trees, we certainly...
Does, is that, is that stormwater area fenced? Because I know there's a development right next door to that. You know, there's a, and I would worry about children coming maybe off the golf path and I'd like to see that fenced.
Yes, we will fence that. Additionally, there's a fence along the property line.
Yes, good.
So, we'll have two fences.
Just because, because the golf path makes that accessible to children.
Well, we're fenced on the other side of the road.
Right, okay, good.
But I agree with your fences, fences are good.
Right.
And we'll have...
Great.
...fence the stormwater area and fence the property.
Excellent, thank you. Tractive nuisance, you know?
Item five on page five says everything needs to be taken care, be done inside, which I've already testified to.
Just, just going back to the fencing, how high should we, just so we can get everything on the record, what's typical?
Four foot.
Four foot?
For the basin.
For the basin.
Four feet?
Four feet for the basin.
So, as I testified, no goods will be sold from premises, everything's inside and there's no hazardous chemicals. All the site facilities will be owned and maintained by the applicant. And we have the architect here, if you want to see more, we do have a rendering when we get to the end.
It's beautiful.
We'll put the rendering up, yes. And again, it's something that fits the site.
I'm going to see. It's back there. So far, the rendering.
So, we get the signs, any of the signs will comply with the ordinance requirement, we're not asking for any leak. We don't have any tenants who are going to be at this time restricted to complying with the ordinance. We get the traffic and circulation, it mentions the cul-de-sac turnaround, which as I testified, we put that there so that anybody that is safe in it has to return that leak, which was asked of us. Whiteville Road improvements will do whatever the county requires, you know, we'll build intersection improvements. Ask for testimony on existing levels of service. Whiteville Road is a very busy road and the four to five extra people come in aren't going to make any difference. We will provide a sign, no tractor trailer access is requested. We will put a sign at the entrance of the property indicating no tractor trailer, as suggested support. Again, it's a typical contractor warehouse, very limited equipment. No pedestrian access is proposed for, for desire. We will apply the pedestrian access fund as required. Number 18 on page seven of the R.B.E. report recommends follow-up and we agree to do that as part of our resolution compliance. There's also in section 244 dash 197, a comment that no area will be used for parking unless it's large enough to provide at least recontinuing stalls. We are requesting waiver to allow the parking as we proposed, we think for the contractor's warehouse, that that's the important part in the iteration. We agreed to the reinforced concrete aprons that are requested, we're agreeing to R.B. ready spaces, E.V. ready spaces. Onto the landscaping, the report asks for testimony on how we're screening between the Tom's River south and we're going to have a fence on our property line, the trees are there, we've provided some trees. This building, when you look at the rendering, people might want to see it. Section 244 dash 193B, comment F5, talks about prohibitive activities with the buffer with respect to grading and stuff, and we're requesting that waiver. The improvements that we're proposing in those areas are appropriate for the building that we're requesting. The islands, number seven in the report, 244 dash 197, requesting waiver to comply. And also, number eight, 244 dash 198, 76-foot shape, plenty of required parallel to the street. We don't own any property, we don't have any space to provide that. We will provide drip irrigation for the landscaping so that it survives. With respect to yield, we believe we'll comply with what was requested. With respect to the solid waste and storage, we gave, will be private trash pickup, we provided an area, no hazardous materials will be installed and we'll comply with all the comments as part of resolution compliance if we act favorably. Discuss the existing approach from the golf course that we intend to leave as shown on the rendering that's up. Any of, any of the fencing on the site that's not on the perimeter or not separating the golf course that's existing will be removed and the fencing will be on the separating golf course from the, from the site that we indicated, we disagree with the fencing around the basin and any permanent fencing as well. With respect to the owner of the transformer and the electric panel, whatever the utility companies want to comply with. On page 10, comment number nine says, provide testimony on environmental impacts as a result of the development. My testimony is that it will be a net benefit because we're providing stormwater meeting and stormwater requirements which reduce any off-site runoff. Number 10 asks about placing temporary water trailers on site, we do not intend to do that. Number 11 asks about earthwork quantities and this was designed to be a balanced site. So, then we get to the justification for, for the variances. And we look at the general amendment to the master plan of July 19th, under the land use plan, the goals and objectives. When I read this, it seemed like it was made just for the site. To achieve a pattern of mixed land uses that achieves various community planning objectives, including provision of residential neighborhood, protection of natural resources, economic development of the community, creation of the deliverable desire of the community. This is in an area where it has no adverse impact on any of the residential and provides those economic opportunities. Next objective to direct growth into areas suited for land development and away from areas appropriate for protection. And that, again, speaks right to the site. Next objective, provide economic development opportunities in areas that are well-suited for such development, that would increase local employment opportunities and improve the ratable base of the township. Again, we get to nail right on the head. And the last one on page two is to provide for commercial development to serve both local and regional needs, measure with demands of the market and based on viable market strategies. And I think this is a great location for a contractor warehouse. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40155B2, under purpose of the Act, A is to encourage and dislack and guide the appropriate user development of all lands in the state, no matter which will promote public health, safety, oral and general welfare. And my testimony is that, again, it's, it's that nail on the head. The variance relief that we're asking for are C2 variances. We need to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. This is a piece of property that I lived a half mile from since, you know, for many years in the eighties and nineties. Never knew it was there other than the ultralights line. The purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which I testified to. Variants can be granted without substantial detriment to public good. And my testimony is that there is absolutely no detriment to public good. The benefits will substantially outweigh the detriments and the variance will not care the intended purposes of the land and zoning ordinance. And this is a use and industrial use in an industrial zone, a great rate of. That's my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anything? Mr. Clay?
Just, just a couple of things. It's nothing the board hasn't seen before. The only real rubs is the Watt Avenue issue and the Jackson and Tom's River Township jurisdiction. And you're going to have to go to them and make whatever peace or whatever. Because I don't think there's any municipality that's going to want to come out and maintain this road. Did you consider a, or you might want to consider a road vacation request?
If we vacate the road, we don't own the property on the side, so we go back to the other one.
Good luck with Tom's River and Jackson. And the only, I know you want to be good neighbors and all, but I'm, something tells me that the improvements that are encroaching should be on the golf course's, you know, property. That I can't believe when the golf course was originally approved, that it had this cart path going on to the adjacent property. And is there a liability issue? Somebody is in a cart, it flips, somebody gets hurt, who's responsible?
And again, I lived in Lakewood since 1979. I lived a half mile of this since the eighties and a golf course went ahead 20, 30 years ago with this. Been there and this applicant is okay with it. The applicant would certainly leave the golf course and get a whole harmless agreement so that that issue would be resolved. But we're not interested in fighting with the neighbor.
And I'm sure the golf course is interested in coming back for an amended site plan to show this deviation from the original.
That is correct.
The app just indicate, this approval does not legitimize the golf course improvements on the property. Because at some point, if the golf course gets sold and they want to go build houses on it, the property lines the property.
Yep.
And the applicant's...
And the only other comment, the board has, I'll say, adopted a policy of coming, coming soon signs, as far as what's going to be there.
I was going to get...
This, this is a little bit different in that if you put the sign on your property of what's coming soon, nobody's going to see it, so.
Even with it, we still have no objection to putting it up if the board wants to see the sign. We have no problem with it.
I just think, people in town, I don't know about the rest of the people on the board, but I, I get phone calls every time there's a backhoe. So, you know, what's going on this piece of property?
We have, we have no objection. The only comment, I think, different than the others, we'd have to wait for the street to be put in before we even put that sign.
Good plan.
But, because I think there's a timeframe you had asked for.
Put it in the woods, right.
Yes, we, we have no problem, otherwise no problem putting up the sign. And if I...
I drove my in-laws home from Alder Grove at county line to Four Seasons South Knolls and there's three projects on the south side of the road. I said, what's that?
That's exactly...
And I happen to know, she's like, how would we know?
So, people at Town Hall, I stopped by there to sign papers and I've gotten, three women came up to me in the last week and said, thank you for the signs. We're not getting as many calls as we used to get.
We have, we have no objection. If we can just, if we just show the picture of the, of the rendering, I think it's very...
Oh, I always like to talk to the architect then.
Okay, we're going to probe him up.
Because they spent their time sitting here, so.
That is fine. Are there any other questions for Mr. Flannard?
Any question? I'm surprised, Mr. Trimmer, you're not asking any questions.
Hi.
I knew you were. I could, I could sense it from here.
I just have one question. You talk about E.V. parking. Where would the parking spaces be for the E.V.?
We would typically put them on the opposite side from the building, so it's way to the building.
Okay, good, because I just want to make sure it's not near the building.
Well, that's subject to the fire official anyhow. He moves them every time.
As Scott Rouse said, the lots extend when we pass the building, because there's no access. Any way we can give like little openings so we can get a truck back there?
You're talking about the two parking aisles on each side?
Yeah, we're in the building, just for fire access.
Yes, yes, yes. And his report says we should extend them, we will extend them.
Yeah, because I mean...
With no fire, we just extend it with no fire.
Right, savvy driver for the fire truck. If we have angle aprons and there's some hard pan back there, they can back a ladder into there and so it does give the 360 that they want.
Yeah, and we will satisfy that.
Yeah, I just, I just figured, I just reiterate it.
Yep.
How do you plan on getting it out of this property? That road is a nightmare.
Fortunately, it's one of the lower traffic generation uses that you can get, so we're not going to put anything near a contractor warehouse.
You, you're really going to go with that statement?
Yeah.
You don't think I didn't pull into that property and try and get out?
Yeah.
Took me three minutes to make a left turn and I almost got clipped.
Were you there like between nine and 11?
No. I was there at two in the afternoon, which should be a nice E.V. time.
It's like school time and ride time. Again, I drive there and you hit it like sometimes between 4:00 and 5:00, you hit it in the early morning and then time to the afternoon.
It's a wide road there.
Yeah.
No, I'm not.
It's a wide road.
I was laughing, I said, I wouldn't want to be pulling a truck out because you're racing and people turning out of Faraday.
Yep.
You know, and you have the railroad tracks and people coming around the bend and they're not looking. Someone's going to get killed there, but, I mean, there's not much we can do about that. I was just curious, is there like a deceleration lane that they're probably going to have to do or...
Well, we need county approval, we need county approval, so...
Right. Well, I just figured I'd ask what you think.
Whatever the county engineer says, we need to...
What do you think you should put with there?
My opinion would be with the low traffic usage, no. If I was there, I would...
There's no cross-street traffic, so there's nothing.
You're talking perfect world, you're a brave man. All right, thank you.
Dr. Campbell, I have a couple of questions. Please.
In the statement of operations, you didn't mention like what the hours of operation would be. You just said... You just said, like typical industrial zone. What, what are you anticipating with the contractor warehouse?
I would anticipate with the contractor warehouse that, that they would get in there early in the morning and they'd get out of the site during some of the activity during the day and then in the evening, it's going to depend on, on time of year. I think a lot of the daylight hours, I don't know.
Could we stipulate till 10:00 or 9:00? Seven to 9:00 or?
It's not over 24 hours.
Right.
Correct, it's not, it's not a 24-hour. I believe 6:00 AM because the contractor sometimes gets to the site.
Six, six to, six to 9:00?
I think that's fine.
Could we stipulate that?
Well, I just, as a, working for a construction company, they usually start it between 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning and then, you know, it can go until, depending on what it is. So when you say contractor warehouse, what kind of tenants are you anticipating or what, what are you like thinking about when you say contractor warehouse?
Like a homeowner, like a person, you have to place a small supply.
I see.
You can go with the end of the page.
And then the four to five employees, is that per tenant or is that the owner is going to have four to five employees and how does that work?
Through the whole building, it's, it's four units. So four to five is what the state of operations say. When I first said it, I said, you know, we'd go four to eight. It looks like at, at least half, we only have one, if, if all of them had two, then, and again, we have plenty of parking. We add, and again, the, the number of reps.
It's 5:00 AM, it's 10:00 AM.
We all have, it's very busy at certain times, but when you're getting employees, maybe that's four to eight hours.
Monday through Sunday.
And then you mentioned that there's no tractor trailers allowed into the site. Where would, if somebody needed something on a tractor trailer, where, where would it go?
And they're going to work out weekends.
Some other sites.
And then, and for leasing purposes, because you say there's not going to be any chemical storage, or is that going to be a requirement within the leases that people won't be able to store hazardous chemicals and things like that in the site?
Absolutely. I would expect that to be a resolution. We have the consent and the leases.
Yeah. It, it's all, Mr. Marzo, it's also a statute. So it's only certain uses in certain zones can, can statutorily do that.
Okay, so maybe we could create the.
Yeah, we can, well, we can put that in there, but.
And then just the hours of operation, if we could define what those are.
We said five, five to nine? Well, five, because Mr. Marzo said that, that often landscapers, for instance, would go in at 5:00 to pick up their stuff and leave. So five to, five to nine might be a more reasonable. Seven days a week.
Are there going to be any business offices in these?
Each of the spaces has a, has an ancillary office associated with the warehouse space.
So is there a chance?
Not a separate.
There's no secretary?
Not a separate, and, and as part of the resolution, we have no objection to, to putting the limitation that they're not separate business offices, they're office associated with each space.
Yeah. Anyone else with any questions? Gentlemen, you're okay, you're okay, you're okay. Don't go far.
Bring up Mr. Collins and show you how pretty the building is.
Great.
We can go to the next exhibit.
All right, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record.
David Collins. David Collins, L.I.N.S.
All right, and your credentials?
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, Nevada, Florida, San Francisco, Georgia. This quarter, I'm being recorded.
You're planning ahead so you can move to a more pleasant environment? Smart man.
Just use the microphone if you can.
Yeah, because we're, we're being recorded, so use the microphone.
Okay, it didn't sound like that was working, that's why. Okay.
I, I almost feel sorry that this very attractive building is going to be so far off the road. I'll have to drive in just to look at it.
Sorry, we'll still feel good about it. We don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
And the, the board accepts his credentials.
We do, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. The drawing that we're looking at is the exterior elevations. Again, this is four small tenant spaces. What we did is we divided the building with a little bit of a step about halfway down that top elevation, just to break up the length of the building, try and make it a little bit more manageable. And we treated this building with a lot of residential architectural details, trying to make it kind of fit in with our neighbors. So we have horizontal lap siding, some stonework at the base, some little canopies with shingled roofs, and we switched our, our materials about halfway up the building. So there are two different types of vinyl siding. The bottom is more like a lap siding, the, the top is more like a shake siding. And we're going to vary the colors on those, just so you get a little bit more horizontals to the building, so that it doesn't feel tall at the top of those gables. Cupola is at the top of the buildings and the windows were shuttered, so really trying to make this look residential. Each of, each of the units has a small office within it, a single-use, single-person bathroom within it, and then the warehouse space. So very typical layout, again, divided in four. You can see that step in the building across the top where we jogged the building down. If you can flip to exhibit five, which is the rendering.
Nice, isn't it?
Again, so, you know, pretty much those materials, we have kind of some warm colors on there. Shingle roof, which we can make that roof solar ready, we, we can design that in. We are going to have trusses to support that roof. We'll have 16 feet clear, that was one of the questions in the planner's report. So that top part will, will be kind of traditional wood trusses, wood frame structure, stone across the base. And on the right side, you can see two garage doors, one for each of those two units, the entry and the entry roof canopy that's cannile-ered out with the brackets on the side. The opposing side of the building would look exactly that same way. And so the entrances and the, and the loading are kind of right next to each other in each of those four tenant spaces.
Very nice, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish it weren't so far off the road.
I can build more of these in town if you want.
Yes, please do.
No, over.
Happy to have them. Very nice.
That is our application.
All right, we need to open to the public.
If you guys want to just do one general open and close, that should suffice.
We need to open to the public.
Open to the public, yeah.
Let's, let's open to the public.
Make a motion.
Second, Sullivan.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone who would like to speak about this, ask questions of the professionals, please come forward now.
Seeing no one come.
It's all, sorry, I don't want to steal your job.
You could do it for us.
It's all your job, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close the public cross-examination portion.
I will second that, Bernstein.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Now, we got to do general, we, we do cross, listen to general.
Okay, open it to general.
I make a motion to open to general comments and testimony on this application only. Sullivan?
Second, Bernstein.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone like, anyone who would like to speak generally on this project, please feel free to come forward now.
Don't rush. Mr. Sullivan?
Oh, all right. Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close the public comment and testimony portion of this application. Sullivan?
I'll second that, Bernstein.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's time to wrap it up.
In summation, very quick, I think the board can see the, the applicant put a lot of time and effort into really making a building that would fit within the area, fit within the zone, not overbuilt, not pushing too much into it. We've agreed to the board's comments. We've given justification for the two variances and we would ask that the board, that the board vote in favor of this application.
I, I would also like to put in that, and I think Mr. Clay had a good idea there, that, that you should have something in writing from the golf course.
We have no problem getting, working out a hold on.
Hold harmless, yeah.
A hold harmless, that's not a problem.
A hold harmless from the golf course, because I think, Mr. Clay, you're absolutely right. Someday, somebody sells that golf course.
Understood.
You're in for a problem.
That's fine.
So let's put that in the resolution.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve block 22111, lot 1.01, Whitesville Holdings LLC, Watt Avenue Warehouse, with all agreed to stipulations. And let me just say, I wish every applicant came before us with warehouses that looked this good. I really do appreciate your work on this. So with that, I motion to approve.
I will second that motion and kudos to you guys for a nice application. I'll reiterate what Mr. Sullivan said when I, before the meeting, looked at these plans and I was like, wow, that's something you don't see every day when it comes to a warehouse. So really, really nice job and let's keep them coming. So thank you. I second it, Heller.
Oh, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Weingart?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing your work again.
Motion to close? I make a motion to close?
I'm more than happy. It's still light out.
Second, Sullivan.
Laura, do we have anything else to do? We good?
We're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, just so you know, I'm leaving.